Luke, say prayer for Bob.
That's right. While in heaven, we thank you for this day and all the privilege you've given us. We thank you, Lord, of our county. And we pray, Lord, that we might seek all the ways we can do to make our county better and move forward, Lord. We pray for those that are sick and those that are bereaved in our counties, all loved ones, forgive them, comfort them to all their needs, Lord. Go this day in the trade that we might make decisions that be keeping what I will today, Lord, and we give you the blessing and praise for it all. Please thank God that's not a name. Amen.
Praise the Lord to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on it. This today is resolution for post-employment benefit for hires after effective after October 1 of 2019. Brooke, you want to read this or you want to get Scott to read?
That's first.
Whereas the general fund budget of Marion County Commission is experiencing severe stress due to rising costs and flat revenue streams, whereas based upon projected forecast, the fiscal year 2020 budget for the Marion County Commission will face unprecedented deficits that will be unsustainable of current general fund reserves. Whereas the Marion County Commission expects certain expenses to continue to escalate without an expected increase in revenues. Whereas the Marion County Commission currently provides certain post-employment health benefits for its former employees. Whereas the Marion County Commission determines that these post-employment benefits currently impose an approximately $150,000 annual burden on the general fund budget. Whereas the primary function of the Marion County Commission is to provide for the safety, economic growth, and highest possible quality of life for the citizens of this county and the members of the Marion County Commission. Whereas this proposal, as well as similar cost-cutting measures, will have the most impact for the residents of the county without a detriment of decrease in services provided. Now therefore be resolved by the Marion County Commission that hereby suspend these post-employment health benefits for all new hires beginning October 1 of 2019.
Do I have any questions on that resolution? I don't think I have. But it affect even any of them? Somebody just saw a new hire? Anybody, the employee don't affect them? This be anybody? That is hard after October 1 of 19. Have a motion on this resolution?
I'm gonna get a motion.
Have a second. A second. All in favor, say aye. I'll pose lap last. Next is resolution on freezing of new hires and overtime. Scott, you know, I will stand up here, you're gonna have to rig them off.
If it's okay, I won't repeat the same part.
Yeah, yeah, just.
The new provision is that the Marion County Commission determines that cap on new hires and overtime pay must be implemented in an effort to limit the general fund deficits. Now therefore be resolved by the Marion County Commission that the Marion County Commission does hereby place a freeze on new hires for all departments of the county commission to a further resolution of the Marion County Commission and places a freeze on overtime pay for all departments of the Marion County Commission unless deemed absolutely necessary by the respective department head in matters of emergency until further resolution of the county commission.
We have any questions on that?
Can you explain that in depth to me? Scott?
Scott?
I guess.
I'll just put it together. Basically, what it means is no new hires assume that if somebody has to be replaced, that that's not what we're talking about. And overtime, limit the overtime unless, as it says, unless absolutely necessary. There's only times when that arises due to emergency situations and that we leave that in the resolution up to the department head to make that call.
There's times when I have to have overtime.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, just like Saturday.
The question be answered, but new hires, if I have someone leave, quit, then I can replace them.
Yeah, that, that's.
Basically, what you're saying is not adding any employees.
Yeah, we're not adding, adding any to any departments, but it's fine to replace. Is that, ain't that what we all agreed on to?
Mr. Chairman, I guess if a lot of times or occasion, we'll have a garbage truck break down and we'll be late getting in, we'll have, we'll have some overtime that was unforeseen. I guess it would be cousin run the lab.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, 'cause I have the same argument about that. When I got trees down, like I can predict when they're gonna fall or wash out the roads or that's the same argument I have about this.
Yeah, we, like Saturday morning, we was getting big old tree out of road at daylight Saturday morning. You know, unforeseen stuff like that, you can't help.
So there's the department head, I have the authority to make that decision.
That's what the resolution says.
Long as it's not abused.
We were.
Basically, on the new hires, Scott, this is said, you can't add any to your staff, but if someone does quit or whatever, they can be replaced as a full-time.
That was, that was my.
Not as a part-time, but as a full-time employee.
That was my understanding. We're not adding to our payroll. If somebody leaves and we have to replace them, well, we have to replace them.
Yeah, Kevin has a deputy to play, he can replace them.
I know we've been trying to cut and cut, cut, and a lot of times they want us to hire part-time, but as this, that's what I will make sure of. We can hire a full-time to replace them instead of putting them. They say, well, you gotta hire part-time to replace it with, and we can hire a full-time back in that position.
And this is whatever y'all decided to do, obviously. So if that's your understanding, then yes, that's.
Yeah, that's what we all agree upon. We have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. I'll pose lap last. Next is resolution for the inmate medical.
There's the same thing, and it is therefore, is that the county commission determines the healthcare costs for the Marion County Jail places tremendous burden on various budgets of the county commission and that the Marion County Commission determines and finds that a decrease in the healthcare budget of Marion County Jail may be accomplished without diminishing the provision of legal on how to put healthcare for the inmates of the jail. Further, it's resolved that the Marion County Commission hereby restricts the funding for healthcare expenses of Marion County Jail to $170,000 appropriation to make the budget to $170,000.
And I think everybody understands that the county's broke because the reason we're making these cuts. We're not broke, but we're, we're having to cut way back. Every department's have to take a cut. We don't want nobody to think that we're picking on just the sheriff's department or the two-way. Us as districts are all taking cuts.
So you cut, cut the note for healthcare back to what it was?
Yes.
Basically, one nurse five days a week?
Yeah, but I think.
On call?
We talked about rebidding too, didn't we?
Yes, we had talked about retrying or bid it, but as of now, I have a nurse seven days a week, now I'm going back to five days a week. Is that correct?
That's. As far as the money, whatever.
He negotiate, one you negotiate.
But that's basically what it would be back to, with that time.
And the people don't know what the went, they went from 170 to what, 300,000?
No, 170 to 2.
235.
230,000.
180, thought it was 180.
Any more questions on this resolution? Do we have a motion? I'm not motion. Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
I'll pose lap last. Resolution concerning the purchase order.
As the county commission determines that numerous offices under the auspices, auspices of the Marion County Commission have certain broad purchasing powers, and the county commission determines that further controls on purchases need to be implemented to ensure the most cost-effective purchasing is taking place. Now therefore be resolved by the Marion County Commission that the county commission does hereby order that all purchases of $200 or greater must be detailed out with the cost of each item specifically stated, and that the county commission does hereby order that the Marion County Commission must specifically approve all purchases of $200 or greater with one vendor.
Question on that, so. I think the biggest thing with this was this, for instance, having a purchase order at one parts store. And the same purchase order being used over and over and over instead of, you know, anytime you buy anything over $200, you have to get a new purchase order, correct, Brooke? That's.
Yes, the other problem we were having, they were getting purchase orders and they were open purchase orders, so we didn't know exactly how much that cost was going to be and if the county resident wasn't able to afford the purchase that was made. So having the approval of a purchase order and it being detailed out rather than being an open purchase order, then the department head and the county commission can guide through the expenditures and make sure that we have enough funds to pay each expenditure.
Got any questions on this? Do we have a motion? I'm not motion. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
I'll pose lap last. Next thing on the agenda is the budget. Which is? If I have any questions, I don't matter.
Chairman, can I ask?
Yeah.
I know we went over the budgets last couple weeks. My employees, some of my employees are here today, they came on their own, I didn't ask them, they're concerned about some of their benefits. We, it's been mentioned that healthcare is going up, family healthcare is going up. They don't know, they don't hear from y'all about anything about their benefits that may be affected. One time, we talked about our holiday pay, the way we work. You know, we get 16 holidays a year right now. The county is paying my guys, because we work 24 hours a day. We wanna know, they wanna know, you know, things like that. That's one, if you, if you explain to them really what's gonna cost, what it's gonna cost them, especially on the insurance package.
The insurance package.
And that's, that's it.
The insurance package is, Brooke, I think that the cost estimate Friday was 15.9%. We hadn't, we hadn't agreed on anything yet. We've thought around adding $60 a month to the family coverage. Y'all pay $60 more a month. That, that affects all of us too. I mean, we all pay. It's, we've absorbed about all we can absorb. I mean, that's, Brooke can explain the money a lot better on the insurance than anyone.
What I've done, I've made a couple of copies, the health insurance pay and the pay expenses that have been given to our full-time active employees over the past couple of years for all of their employees. It's the same exact sheet that I presented y'all with on Friday. What, the biggest thing is, is your difference between the costs that's paid out for single health coverage versus the costs that's paid out for your individual who has family. The county's paying approximately $2.40 more for an individual who has family coverage than what they are for a person who has single coverage per hour. So the person sitting beside you, if they have family and you have single, they're making $2.40 more than what you are. Since 2006 to now, air insurance has more than doubled in cost. An example for that would be for single coverage in 2006, the county would pay, let's see here.
Pick a little out of the book.
The county in 2006 for single coverage would pay $304 a month. And for family coverage, the county would pay $402 a month per individual. In 2019, where they were paying 304 for single coverage, they now pay $516 for single coverage. And where before they paid $402 for family coverage, they are now paying $904 per month for family coverage. Though the individuals that have the family coverage had consistently paid $337 per month, last year they raised that amount by $60 to where the individual paid $397, but the county still paid $904 for family. And now, we've received the letter from local government health insurance to where their board has voted to increase the cost of insurance again. So your insurance is going up right at 5%. And the county, even to go up $30 more for payroll for just the general fund, which predominantly everyone in this office right now, with the exception of a portion of the county commission's salary and Mr. Shaw, we're all in the general fund. To go up $60 per month on us that have the family coverage is a savings of $28,000 to the county general fund. Or if they absorb that cost, it is a cost of $28,000 to the general fund. And there's not a lot of places, because we're all in the same boat being in the general fund, that they can go in and cut. And if we absorb the cost, we're gonna have to start looking at layoffs. That's to the part that we're at. There's no new revenues, there have been no new revenues over the past several years, over the past several decades, and their expenditures have increased. And insurance on its own, with it more than doubling, has been a big burden to the county commission, and it's something that affects us all.
Put one thing too, the 28,000, you've got to turn around. And add the 5% or 5.9, whatever the insurance is going up, it is gonna cost the general fund more, at least 5% more on everybody's insurance. I don't think you figured that yet because you just got it.
It's not that. Now, this wouldn't, I'm using the 28,000 as an example because if I were, are in the general fund, with the exception of, but this would have to be countywide, it would have to go into effect in the districts, in all departments, all funds. Anyone that's under the county umbrella that has health insurance, that the county pays for a portion of their health insurance, it would have to hold true for every department.
But the simple answer to the question is, we're looking at going up 60%, $60 a month to, to the employee on the insurance. And I'd say that affects, well, affects all of us, but Mr. Bob?
Chairman, have, have something?
Yes, sir.
If, if that's the fact, why, why don't they make it mandatory instead of help screening to keep our insurance down? And we come and do it, it don't affect nothing. It don't count. It don't even help us.
It does.
What they have stated as the reason you have to jump through several loopholes. One is you have to have at least 80% active employee participation in the LGHIB Wellness Program, and we did receive that. So they discounted our premium by $10 per month for everyone participating. They kept us in a standard rate because the number of employees or the number of, the number of individuals that are on the plan, that are under the age of 65, does not meet 5% minimal participation requirement. So you have three things that you have to meet to be able to get to that premium standard, and you have to do that each and every year. So every year, we try our best to make sure that we can do as much as we possibly can. But until we retire some individuals that are under the age of 65 and meet that 5%, we're not going to meet that premium rate exhibit for that one. But I do have a copy of that letter that states that about the $10 discount for those who are on the screen, that'll be more than wide to their pockets for everyone, as well as the sheet that discusses the health insurance and the monies that have been given to all their county employees from 2006 to 2019. Because as an employee myself, I sometimes forget what things cost until it's in paper in front of me, and I did this as a project just so that I could see what air rates were and what the county had done. So I've got copies of that as well, that'll be more invited too.
Chair. The biggest thing, Derek, we can't control the insurance companies.
I know that, I just wanted, we know.
Yeah.
It seem like it's going up, although we're doing the screening, it's going up every year.
This year, guys, I've mandated all my employees to come take it.
Yeah, and we appreciate that. I mean, I think this is the largest.
I asked to pay one hour overtime to come to make sure they got it done once it wasn't working, which is.
I've been employed here nearly eight years, about seven years before being elected, and I think that's the biggest turnout we've ever had. And I think all your employees showed.
They did.
And both of mine did. Oh, I gotta come down on this. One thing I didn't understand about the insurance was how the single coverage was getting monthly, was it 300?
The single coverage? The county paid $304 in 2006, and now the county pays $516 per month for individuals who have single coverage, but they're paying $904 per month on individuals who have family coverage.
And that's per employee?
Per employee.
See, that's what I couldn't figure out the difference. One, the insurance companies was, or one, the county was paying so much on family and they weren't paying on single. It didn't make no sense. We pay all a single. Yeah, but it's paid more actually employee on family. Yeah. But there's not a soul sitting here that could afford to pay the difference. I know. That would be roughly 400 more dollars a month, figuring in my head.
400 a month are possibly 4,000 a year.
I think too, that the public, Kevin and us too, this didn't happen since we've been in office. We've been in office 10 months, and this is not our budget that we've been working on and things have went. It's like she said, this has been going on for years, and it's just now come to a head that we're having to address it and try to figure out a best way for everybody. And even, and it's like they said, we're, we're taking cuts too. But this problem has been coming for a long time, and it's just now, you know, kind of came to a head that it's gotta be addressed because if we keep going down the road we're going, we're just going further down. And there's gotta be a turning place summers, and it's just put on us to do that. It's not that we've come in and we've broke the county or nothing. This is all, we was handed this, and this is the way it's been going, going down for 10 or 12 years, whatever, and I think Mr. Bob will tell you that. We discussed that other day, how much, you know, from 10 to 12 years ago, the way things was going. But the cost is going up on everything, and then the cost of living is going up, and we understand, and we had to comment about it being more than that, and we, and we understood if you're, if you're one guy and you're paying the family and you're, you're the only one that brings in money, you know, $60 a month, and, you know, we even considered looking at, some talked about 100, 120, that'd be a hard hit on some families, you know, their, their budget's not set for that. But we're trying to cut it as low as we can cut it, that we're in work for everybody and everybody won't feel it as, as hard, you know?
We inherited this and we're.
Right.
We're looking like the bad guys.
Yeah, but we're really not, and we're, and we do, I do, especially, and we all do, we take into consideration of families and people. I know you, you go ahead and $200, $300 a month taken out of your check, that's a big hit for some families. That's whether they get more groceries or gas or whatever, and I understand that, believe me, I do. And we're just trying to fix a bad situation that it won't get worse from trying to work it in. And we're just trying to fix a bad situation that it might get worse from trying to work it in.
We understand, and my employees, I think, understand certain things, but, you know, the morale is getting low to work for the Maine County Commission, Sheriff's Department. You, you throw in the fact the insurance going up. And then you throw the fact in with raise not being implemented since two thousand and thirteen. So, you know, it's, it's this a way. It's really frustrating on the county employees, my employees. I can just speak for my employees, but...
And my, I can make do with our employees.
And that's, that's where we're at. And I, I told y'all Tuesday morning, y'all are in a tough position. Y'all got to make some tough decisions, but, you know, I, I always try to take care of my employees the best we can and I can.
Our employees.
Each, each, each one does, because you have to. They're, they're the ones at the back on it again, not us. So, I mean, that's why they're here to listen. They want y'all to explain certain things. I've tried to explain, but they want to hear from y'all. And that's why they're here.
Listen, I appreciate, I appreciate you coming. I'm sitting out there with you. I'm not even pleased with it anymore than any of you.
Right.
We're not, we're not setting up your, you know, getting all the goodies and y'all taking all the hits.
Right.
Everybody's taking hits.
Our, our districts, we have got twenty-five thousand dollar patch and baby money out of our districts. We've got, we get less gasoline money in our districts than we used to. So we're, we're not, you know, it's not us, just because we have to present a budget. It's not that we, we're able to get any, we're, we're just satisfied about this y'all are. And certainly if you've got, anyone got any question in here that, don't leave here without, if you've got a question, without asking it. I mean, we're not...
We'll do our best.
We'll do our best answer with the help of our lawyer and Brooke in the back. So, you know, we're not, we're, we're not satisfied. But we've had, I gather, within the last several, I mean, ten, five to seven years, we've lost over half a million dollars of money coming into the county. For different things. We can list these things, show you that we get less, we're less under now than we were five, ten years ago. And doing, and of course, inflation's hit us, growth has hit us, you need more people, two-way needs more people. We need more people. I mean, we were down, I was down one man at one time. I mean, so we're not, you know, it's not, uh, I, I, I feel you like y'all do.
Yeah.
Yeah, our people aren't happy either.
And I'm like, Bob, I'm glad y'all here because if you, if you do have questions, ask. Because, you know, the more, the more opinions we get from the public, the more we can take it in and, and, you know, and try to, try to make a resolution for everybody. I wish we could just wave a badge, you know, and, and everybody would be happy, but it's, we're, we're, we're not happy. I mean, it's hard for us to do this. And then you consider all the different departments and stuff that, that you do. And we're not perfect. You know, we, we may make mistakes on this. But we're going to do our best to try to do what's best for the county and for the entire county.
Anyway, last year, we had an eighteen thousand dollar cushion after our budget, Brooke.
Last year, in the general fund, you had a forty-four thousand dollar cushion. Currently, after payroll last week, you have a four thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollar cushion. We haven't received all of our bills from the general fund. So by the time I close out the year on October fifteenth, we will have gone into reserves.
The way I got this figured, last, last year, they had a budget eleven million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. This year, we got a ten thou, ten million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Is that right? So you're just right on a million dollars list. And we still got to come up with a bill of due. The county's been kicked as far as it been kicked. This is just something that, me and Dale were, we're talking to Garland Grudger here a while back. And, and this really stuck in my mind. Garland said, just always remember that you put your hand on the Bible and took the oath to do what was best for the county. It's not best for the employees right now, but as county overall, we're doing the best we can to, to stay afloat. I mean, that's, you know, I would love to give everybody a raise, but we can't, we can't give nobody a raise and we can't, we're paying all we can pay. I mean, we're, we're, we've got the money stretched as thin as it'll go. Now, like he said, we inherited this. Nobody's fault. I mean, it, it's just a chain of events that's took place over the years. Losing half a million dollars income like Bob says, I mean, you know.
And it wasn't a bad choice. These choices were not ours. It wasn't the county's. It was, they were just, uh, quit making contributions and losing here, here and there, thing going up.
Any more questions? Did we answer all your questions, Kevin? You threw the bunch out one time.
Like I said, employees, countywide, it's been here for y'all instead of a partner here. That's why they're here.
Y'all, any of the employees, I mean, we're here to listen to y'all.
Well, your county employees ain't going to be happy when everything's going up, pay rates ain't going up.
Yeah.
I'm already working, we're in jobs as it is.
That's the way.
If I can.
I say I'm already working three jobs as it is. I can't take on a fourth to try to make it. Y'all talk about inflation affecting the county. It affects us too.
Oh, yeah.
Everything has went up, but our pay.
But I mean, we want y'all to understand that we don't have the money to raise our pay. I mean, that's just, that's the bottom line. We just don't have the money.
As, as we talked a while ago on that, the only way that the money is if, if, what Scott was talking about, is if an employee, you know, if employee leaves, this is just my theory. You know, if you lose an employee, Kevin leaves as a deputy. And Kevin can work it to where he don't need that deputy, then on the other hand, he's going to say he needs that deputy. But then, you know, if somebody leaves or something, instead of replacing it, I think you need to take this in consideration, that you can take that money, or in my opinion, you take that money and spread it out among your deputies to give a raise. Try to create a way in-house to do that. But, you know, if somebody retires, and he retires, you come forward to the commission and say, can I take this money and spread it out among my deputies instead of replacing the retiree? You know, in-house create, to, to create a way to do this. That's, that's how hard it is right now to come up with the money. If, if, you know, like, like Tim said, you can't just give.
Kevin's like, Kevin can't afford it.
I'm in the same boat y'all are in as far as employees. Yeah, I've got a large amount of employees, but I don't have enough. Y'all don't have enough. So there's no way if I lose someone to do what you're saying. It's good principles. I understand that. If I could, I would do that. That's...
But they can't, none of them, I mean...
Yeah, you've got two men, one, one of them left. You've got to hire them, you know.
Right.
No, I, I...
And by, by doing that, if you can do it in-house, you're saving your money. You're saving your package money. You're saving all of us.
Sure, it's been a good package.
Right. But then it goes back to your, your hand doing all they can do at, at that proper time, and I understand that, you know.
It's just like, I mean, you know, I was the third man on our crew, and then I got elected. Well, I couldn't afford to hurt nobody to take my place. So, you know, me and my two men are doing the job that four of us was doing for the same money. I mean, it's just, you have to do what, you got to do what you got to do. I mean, that's... That's the same way it was in District Two when I started twenty-two, twenty-three years ago. There were six full-time employees, two, three part-time. Now it's got down to two full-time employees. That's how it's changed.
I'm going to speak on behalf of law enforcement officers, not necessarily the Sheriff's Department. Well, we're getting ready to go to work in the afternoons, knowing that it might be our last day to go to work. And sometimes we might feel underappreciated, underpaid. Something's going to have to be done nationwide, and something's going to have to be done locally. I, I, I understand, and all these guys here are going to agree with me. But when you get up, when you get up every day and see that somebody, a law enforcement officer has been killed in line of duty, it's a fine line, and I told somebody this other night, it's a fine line on doing your job and not doing your job because you don't feel appreciated or you don't feel paid enough. You know, I understand, I understand that we're not in it for the money. I'm not in it for the money. I like to do my job. I like to help folks. But some of these people, some of these deputies have got more family than I've got. You know, they've got wives, kids, and stuff. But I understand it's going to have to be something that's done nationwide. There's a law enforcement shortage all across America. Nobody wants to do it anymore.
Well, I think I speak for, for all of us. We all appreciate everything y'all do.
Well, it is good to hear that.
If it was any way we could, we would pay everybody more.
I don't think we could really overpay you.
No.
I mean, what should...
I wouldn't do your job. I mean, you know, I've been, y'all been out on, singing for me at night with trees and all down, you know. If there's power line, it gets a little dangerous for me, but y'all right there to, to got my back everywhere and anywhere we've ever been. Y'all helped me, you know, and I appreciate it. Y'all, y'all helped the whole county. I'm, I'm sure there's some that won't agree, but, you know, they're the ones that, that y'all like to do.
Well, every, every one of us enjoy our job.
Yeah, I mean, you have to.
I can speak, I can speak for all the guys I work with. We all enjoy our job. We like to do what we do.
Y'all have to do it. I mean, you, you, y'all would have to do it, enjoy it to do it. I mean, because y'all got probably the most dangerous job in the world, in my opinion. And I really appreciate everything y'all do. Even Jared.
I mean, he is, the, the whole, the whole Sheriff's Department does a great job.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody.
Everybody does.
Because it, I mean, without, without the Sheriff's Department and without everybody helping each other, then it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be what it is.
Amen.
Mr. Chairman, I, you mentioned earlier, we, I had made a request, actually back in July the nineteenth, doing what y'all had, some of y'all had suggested doing, the commissioner did. You know, we'd lost a position in Road and Bridge Forum. And we took those responsibilities and spread out amongst our existing employees and tried to give them a little bit of a salary increase. You know, the justification obviously would be they're, they're doing a higher skilled work, which requires more skill and more knowledge and more abilities than, than their original job. And we could save close to twenty thousand dollars out of the two-way. It was, we had originally said forty thousand out of the solid waste of two-way, but, you know, we went from a nineteen dollar, fifty cent employee without an employee and, and passed it along to other employees. You know, I just would, you know, that's actually cutting an employee and saving the taxpayer's money as opposed to hiring an employee. And yeah, do I, do we need more employees? Absolutely, we need more employees, you know. And, you know, and, and it's tough on everybody. We realize that, and that's why we tried to do something that we could help them, help the county, help the taxpayers and help the employees as well. You know, that, that, I just got that request before y'all.
Any more questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the budget for two thousand and twenty?
I make a motion to approve the budget for two thousand and twenty.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say yeah. All opposed, like what? If we have no more comments, do we have a motion to adjourn? Count made motion to adjourn, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Both like what? He is adjourned.